I'm going to call the City Council Caucus in each order for the number of items 2014. They're going to come up here tonight regarding sidewalk updates and they'll go into the act of then for reconsideration. The clerk will be ready in a moment.
Item number one, an ordinance amending Article 4, Chapter 228 and Chapter 138 of the Code of the City of Schenectady regarding regulating vaults within the city right-ofways.
This has been discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, under original consideration, an ordinance authorizing the reappropriation of the 2013 budget regarding Moisten Street demolition.
Discussed in the Finance Committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, an ordinance authorizing a reappropriation of the 2014 budget regarding capital equipment.
Also discussed in Finance without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, an ordinance amending the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing relative to proposed legislation deleting obsolete boards and commissions from the Schenectady City Code.
Again, this is just calling for a public hearing without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by Amica Mutual Insurance Company, ASO Estate of Donald Sophia against the city.
Discussed in Claims without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surcharge concerning 1752 and 1752 through 1754 State Street.
Also discussed in Claims without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax surcharge action by Mary Lou Aragosa.
Also discussed in Claims without objection on consent. Item number eight. Item number eight, I'm actually going to hold that one for two weeks so we can award it appropriately. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution supporting Senator Kaczik's bill requiring the state to reimburse local governments for the cost of running a second primary election.
This was also discussed in Committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, under Contract and Supply, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Erdman Anthony for the design of improvements to the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course.
Okay, I understand we'll have a roll call on this one. And then one other item from our Claims Committee meeting tonight.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim with Mikhail Seraphini.
Discussed in Claims this evening without objection on consent. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, moved by Mr. Erickson, seconded by Ms. Prazzo. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. I will now then call to order the City Council meeting for February 10th, 2014. Tonight is a special night and we are going to begin the meeting with the Fire Department promotional ceremony. All right, if you would please rise for the invocation given by Father Richard Carlino, who is the Chaplain for the Fire Department.
Let us pray. O gracious and loving God, we are full of gratitude to you for sending into our midst those persons who are willing to give of themselves in sacrificial service to the community. Thus, we thank you for our Honorable Mayor Gary McCarthy and the distinguished members of our City Council. In a special way this evening, we thank you for giving us a new head of our city's fire department, Chief Ray Senical, and for his willingness to be at the helm of the ship whichever strives to safeguard our people. So, dear Lord, please continue to bless him and his immediate predecessors, Chiefs Delaraco, Farstad, and Varno, all our wonderful firefighters, especially those being promoted this night, as well as our noble police officers. Continue to bless our civil magistrates. Continue to give one and all your strength, aid, and affirmation from where you abide, above in the heavens, as well as below here on earth. Finally, bless all the citizens of our beloved city of Schenectady. May one and all always strive to work harmoniously and cooperatively for the common good. It will give you the honor, the power, and the glory both now and forevermore. Amen.
I'll ask our recently retired chief, Michael Delaraco, to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Present arms!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Order, arms!
Okay, you can be seated.
Thank you, Madam President, for allowing us to put this on the agenda this evening. It's our new podium, which was crafted by carpenters within the city employment, doing it in their spare time. They thought that they should have something that was bigger and more fitting, so we all have to make our speeches now longer and more detailed. I won't put that in place until next time, so things will be fairly quick here tonight. But I feel fortunate to be here tonight to be able to make these promotions when really have such a tremendous pool of talent within this department, that they do things, it's how you make greatness routine, that the level of service that is provided to this community, that we're just so fortunate to have the command structure that has been in place under the leadership of Michael Delaraco. As we transition now to Ray Senical, the people of Schenectady are well-served. And I'm just proud tonight to formally administer the oath to Ray Senical. Chief, I notice in all the press advisories, they seem to leave out your long and distinguished career as an Assistant Chief. And get a little chuckle with that, but I remember the first night that he was Assistant Chief, we had two-second alarm fires, a car fire. I know by the time I got to the one-second alarm fire, there was nothing available to be deployed, which we always think in the city, you know, you put down the phone and they're going to be right there. But there are times when the resources are challenged. But Ray just exhibited that calm level of walking through the one fire scene, freeing people up, getting apparatus redeployed in the community. And it's when he did that, you know, I said, "It's only been day one," but made the right decision. And so, Chief, if you'd step forward and if your father would like to join us inside the rail. Chief, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your full name.
Aye, Raymond Senical.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And the Charter of the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as fire chief.
That I will faithfully discharge duties as fire chief.
In and for the City of Schenectady.
In and for the City of Schenectady.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Chief.
To bear with me, I have a slight cold tonight, so my voice isn't working exactly the way it should be. I would like to say welcome Mayor McCarthy, City Council members, Commissioner Bennett, family members, the men and women of Schenectady Fire Department, the citizens of Schenectady. I would like to start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to lead this Fire Department. It's a true honor. I would like to say thank you for the support, Mayor McCarthy, Commissioner Bennett. I'd like to say to Chief Delaraco, thank you for your leadership and guidance in setting the bar so high. I'm ready for the challenge. To say thank you to my father, Captain Raymond Senical. Started the department in 1963, retired 34 years later, 34 years later as a captain. Fire Department's been in my history, it's in my blood. I was born in '62, so I was a year old when he came on the job. So, I have an idea what this job was about when I started. The day I started the job, 1989, I had several people come to me, and they said, "If you," and this is without exaggeration, "if you are half the fireman that your father is, you'll be a true hero." Thank you to the men, the retired men who educated me and showed me the way. I'd like to say thank you to my family for the dedication. Understand my dedication and passion to this department. I know it's not easy. Phone rings at 3:00 a.m., is it your parents? Is it your children? Your heart's racing. It's the Fire Department. And off you go. Mother's Day, 25 people at the house. Phone rang, have to go. Christmas Day, telephone rings, have to leave. So, I say thank to my family for understanding. I appreciate that. I didn't want to mention my son. At 10 years old on the All-Star team, I took time off in the department to go see the game. We had a late call. I didn't get there in time. I got out of my vehicle, got out of my car in a parking lot, I heard the roar of the crowd, and my son hit a grand slam home run. He won the game. I was in a parking lot. Well, thank you. Thank you, son. Appreciate that, understanding. To the men and women of Schenectady Fire Department, to answer the call day in and day out, you are true professionals. Your effort does not go unnoticed. I say thank you. I appreciate that. My office staff, I've been downstairs for, as the mayor said, a total of about five weeks. In that short time, they helped me every single day. I'd like to say thank you. All that being said, I'd like to take a few minutes and tell you what your city fire department does and who we are, just what these men and women accomplish every single day. Last year, closed in 213, the department did over 17,000 calls. That's 22,000 pieces of apparatus responding in one year. Think about that, 22,000 runs. Our rescue company, One, was the sixth busiest rescue company, medical rescue company in the nation. Think about that, six thousands of fire departments. Engine One was top 100. Truck One was 26th. It's no small accomplishment. We handle fires in the city. We've been to Niskunia in Scotia. They call us, we respond without question. We handle all the hazardous material calls countywide. We have an arson task force that works very closely with ATF. We appreciate their help. The national conviction rate for arson is 7%. Our department had an arson survivability rate in 2013 of 40%. That's six times the national average, and we're proud of that. We have a tactical medical team. This is a team of paramedics that are specially trained. They're trained in special medical tactics and procedures. They work closely with the city police department. These paramedics are on the scene in the event a police officer is injured while conducting their special operations. And we're happy to provide the service as we respect and acknowledge the danger our city police officers face on a daily basis. We're happy to be there. Fire prevention program works with families, educating them on fire safety. We also have a juvenile fire centers program that addresses children at a young age the dangers of fire. Excuse me. We're involved in several benefits. Firefighters donate their time. One of them is American Heart Association benefit ran by Lieutenant Demarest. It's called Run for Your Life, where we had over 700 participants last year. Very big community boost. MDA, Boot Drive raised thousands of dollars a year. These men and women donate their time. A few years ago, there was a study conducted about worldwide, this is a worldwide study done on dangerous occupations, or the number-one most dangerous occupation in the world. That's right, it's firefighting. That being said, with the information just presented, the sixth busiest rescue company, 22,000 calls, it's clear to me that the people, clearly that our people are faced with an even higher level of danger than the average Fire Department. I acknowledge that, and I understand that. I see it on a daily basis. Therefore, it's my focus, it's my platform, if you will, as the chief of this department. My focus will be the safety, not only for the citizens, but the safety of men and women of the Schenectady Fire Department. The fire service will always be a dangerous profession. There's no way around that. However, through awareness, prevention, and training, I believe we're able to reduce some of these risks. We're going to be reducing fires through fire prevention programs, smoke detector programs, and education. Through the juvenile fire centers program that I just mentioned, educating schoolchildren. We've been working closely with the codes department to prevent fires, something that we just started doing recently. Through our arson task force to deter arson-for-profit, we're going to continue our outstanding arrest rate. Moving forward, we have a very young department. Better than half of the department has less than 10 years' service. Therefore, training will be one of my top priorities. Not only classroom training, but hands-on, industry, and at-the-drill-tower-type training. It's been well documented that firefighting is a very mentally and physically demanding job. Heart attacks are the leading cause of firefighter fatalities. Therefore, I will place strong emphasis on physical fitness. I will continue the lead-by-exemple strategy implemented by Chief Delaraco several years ago. And I just have to, although I do have a somewhat prepared speech, I do have to mention Chief Delaraco. I'm going to give him up here at 62 years old. I would say that better than half the men and women on this department, between basically 20s or in their 30s, 40s, and like myself, in my 50s, their goal is not to let Chief Delaraco beat them. That's the truth. There's a lot of people training to train hard, because they don't want a 62-year-old fire chief making them look bad like he has in the past. So, Chief, you're continuing to train. I'm sure you'll be there. I will strive to bring the best equipment to our people as part of my plan to help ensure their safety. I would like to say congratulations to our new fire officers being promoted tonight. And in closing, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity. It is respect, true honor, and great pride that I look forward to leading this group of true professionals as a fire chief of the Schenectady City Fire Department. Thank you.
Now, it's with pleasure to announce the promotion to Assistant Chief of Michael Gillespie. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your full name.
Aye, Michael Gillespie.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support and uphold
And that I will support and uphold
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And the Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As Assistant Fire Chief
As Assistant Fire Chief.
In and for the City of Schenectady
In and for the City of Schenectady.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Chief. I'd like to administer the oath to new Deputy Chief, Michael O'Clair. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your full name.
Aye, Michael O'Clair.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And the Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As Deputy Chief
As Deputy Chief.
In and for the City of Schenectady.
In and for the City of Schenectady.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Chief. Now, Captain Christopher Keigho and Captain Michael Angelosi. Gentlemen, if you'd raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your full name.
Aye, Christopher Keigho.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear. Support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And the Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
Faithfully discharge the duties.
As fire captain
As fire captain.
In and for the City of Schenectady
In and for the City of Schenectady.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen. So if you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, state your full name.
I, Judge Madden.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
The Charter and the laws of the City of Schenectady.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As Fire Lieutenant.
As Fire Lieutenant.
In and for the City of Schenectady.
In and for the City of Schenectady.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, are you ready then? Okay, I'd like to say, really thank you everybody for coming, and there'll be a short reception downstairs in room 110, which is one level below us. Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone. All right, we'll have a slight pause in the council meeting while those of you who want to go down to the reception can do so.
I was going to say, I saw another one on the counter there, but I guess that's.
It's not ours.
Okay. I can't.
All right, we will get back to the agenda, and if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo.
Present.
Ms. Porterfield.
Chair.
Mr. Erickson.
Yes.
Mr. Riggi.
Yes.
Mr. Mutiveren.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have one public hearing tonight regarding proposed ordinance amending section 228-82 of the Code of the City of Schenectady relative to the regulation of sidewalk cafes. I have one person signed up to speak to that, and that's Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor.
On the, on the proposed sidewalk ordinances, some of the regulations and so forth needs to make sure that we've got egress and access problems that are taken care of. On outdoor sidewalks, cafes, and so forth, we've got to make sure there's accessible seating, and that the accessible route is kept clear. The proposed is five feet. Five feet is pretty well narrow, and you have to add another, if, if the five feet is to the edge of the curb, and it's got more than a six inch, then you need to go another foot. So you need that foot, because when a wheelchair turns, it turns, and some people don't have a depth perception, that's the reason why you have to have a foot off of there. A lot of this stuff is in the regulations set forth, and I've got a copy of it here for you. Also too, is there's an IRS tax credit of $15,000. Somehow I didn't bring the paper with me. I'll get it to the deputy clerk, and also I've got to get it to John Posner and to the city public works person. And so I'll have this backup material for you. Also too, is that there is a, US Access Board is going to be doing a free webinar on April the 4th on accessible restaurants and cafeterias, and it's going to be on the new 2010 ADA standards. Also too's in the codes, it also states that ADA, people have got to remember, ADA's not a building code, it's a civil rights law. And so therefore, it's, there is no grandfathering clause. So we've got to be able to interpret that. Also, a couple of years back, the New York State incorporated Title III into the human rights law of Executive Law 296, so it's also a violation under 296. New York State building codes is much more stringent than the, than the federal regs, so, and some assets, the federal regs are more stringent, so you're going to need to add both of those two in there. So, and basically trying to tell the, the restaurant owner whether they need to have three-foot-wide tables or 30-inch tables, that all we need to do is make sure that there's accessible seating within the sidewalk cafe, and that it's wheelchair available. And again, you know, these are just some of the things that need to be tightened up, and I'll let Mr. Posner and the city engineer on some of those regulations. And here's the papers.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed. We will move on then to approval of the minutes from January 27th, 2014. Mr. Riggi moves it, second by Ms. Parazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Communications and petitions from the clerk.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, February 10th, 2014. From the mayor, a list of appointments dated February 10th, 2014. Under general, received letter from the American Legion Post 1002 extending their gratitude for a recent donation from the city. Also received a letter from American Legion Post 1005 extending their gratitude for a recent donation from the city. Also a letter from the American Legion Post 1485 extending their gratitude for a recent donation from the city. Under petitions, there are none.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Ms. Porterfield.
I just wanted to, to remind folks that February is American Heart Disease Month, and that people should get their, their hearts checked. In, at Ellis, at the Ellis Medical Program, they, it has, one of the only ones in the region for women's heart disease. There's a screening program. This past Friday was Go Red for Women, but we weren't there Friday, but I asked the members of the Health and Rec, the gentlemen, to wear ties, red ties tonight, and thank you for that. And I see that Ms. Parazzo and Ms. King are also wearing ties, uh, wearing red. I think it's really, it's extremely important that we take care of our health, and heart disease is one of the things that people sometimes don't know that they have, and then things happen. At the Ellis Medicine, they have a specific program, community wellness program, where people can go to have their hearts checked. It specifically is on congestive heart failure, and there, there's information here, who can go, I mean, where you can reach people and how to get in touch with it. So I think it's extremely important that people pay attention to this. I know that it's only during February that we really talk about it, but it's, it's pretty significant, and women unfortunately often die more often of heart disease than men. And my, personally, I know two people who actually suffered a heart attack within the past 10 days. Fortunately, one of those people survived, but the woman that did not. So it, for me, really rings really close to home, to, to have lost someone that I know because of this. So I just, again, wanted to remind folks, you know, when we talk about health and recreation, we mostly talk about recreation, but in order to be able to have recreation, you have to be healthy. So I just want to remind folks to get their hearts checked. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? No? All right, we'll close, declare that part of the meeting closed. We will move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up, and that's Mary McLean.
Good evening, my name is Mary McLean, I live in the city. Item number nine regarding Senator Kaczak's bill. It's always a good thing to save money, and there is no need to hold more than one primary in one year. A second primary is forced on the city, and the state should pay to hold it. I support the bill. And while the council is considering the bill, may I suggest that you also take a public stand on increasing the minimum wage. No one on City Council in the City of Schenectady has taken a public stand in support of raising the minimum wage. I personally think the minimum wage perpetuates poverty. And also, pass a resolution to stop the practice of padding pension benefits with overtime money for the last year of employment. That is what I would do if I was sitting in one of those seats. For me, a council seat means a platform to effect change. It means access and openness. It means the availability of official stationery for writing letters and so forth. Not bad. It doesn't mean paying taxpayer, using taxpayer dollars for medical coverage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we will move to the approval of the legislative agenda. Motion to approve, Ms. Porterfield, second by Ms. Parazzo. All in favor? Aye. And we have one item that is a roll call vote, and that's the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Erdman Anthony for the design of improvements to the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course. If the clerk would call the roll? Or first, does anyone want to speak to it first? Or just when you? All right, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you. So this item, which is the improvements that are proposed for the municipal golf course, which I think in terms of the work that is, we're considering doing, I think is important. It's drainage and it's irrigation for the course, so it's something that we need to do. However, my objections is more to the, the process in terms of how we conclude, who we choose to do the work. And we talked about it quite a bit in committee, but I'll kind of summarize, you know, one of my major concerns with the process, and it's the scoring. And we had a, a group of individuals who were very familiar with the golf course or on the advisory committee, and they filled out a matrix, a scoring matrix, to evaluate the multiple proposals that we received. And I find, you know, after doing a little bit more, looking into the, the scoring, that the data was not really, I feel the data was flawed. And so if, very simply, if something like pricing is to be scored, it's, it's not very subjective. And however, I felt that the scoring of pricing was subjective, where a firm who has a higher price would get less points for score, for price, and a firm that had a lower price would get more points for price. I think that's a fair way to do it, however, the scoring did not indicate that. Some got a 40%, some got a 95%. So they seem to be all over the place in terms of how people scored, and, and it was not linear to how the pricing actually came out. So that's one of my, I guess, main concerns with it, and so by looking at the evaluation, I'm not sure I can determine who had the best proposal by, by looking at the scoring of the five individuals that were on the board. So my opinion that we need to go back and re-score them, and then whoever is the best scored firm could be chosen at that point. But the way it's been done now, I'm not sure I have the confidence that it's sufficiently accurate data to make a decision on, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Parazzo.
I've been quite vocal about the process, and was uncomfortable with the way the process worked with our last RFP, so I took it upon myself to spend quite a chunk of time with Mr. Wallen and Mr. Winkler, about an hour and a half, along with 11 proposals, and we talked about the process that was used for this particular RFP. We talked about a process going forward. I felt very comfortable with the reason, the ratings fell the way they did. I think price is certainly an important component, but I also feel like a full proposal, meeting all the criteria, is also a key component, and comparing to apples to apples is a pretty important thing also. So in calling through all of the information, I think that the end result was a fair end result. I think that we can tighten up on the process, which we're in the midst of doing right now, so that it's clearer to people, and easier to understand, and it doesn't take them an hour and a half meeting of going through it piece by piece by piece to feel confident that the process was fair and complete. And I also think that as a council, working on that process, so that we are allowing the best information to go out to the public, and also allowing the best process for our city professionals to rely on is key. And ultimately, I do believe in our city professionals, and I, we're not voting yet, but that's why I will be voting aye when we vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Yes, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I just want to remind folks that this is actually the second time this has come back. We actually had it come before the council, before it was pulled from the agenda, because we received some information that someone had concerns about particularly RFP. So we revisited this, and I also met with Mr. Wallen, and spent a great deal of time talking about it, going through it. We've, as a council, you know, discussed it. We've, as a council, you know, discussed it and the process. So we are revisiting the process and tightening it up, you know, many of the things that Ms. Perazzo has already said. But I also feel that the, we have given a task to our review team, including people, employees of the city of Schenectady. And I feel that having worked with them on this particular thing and talked with them about it, I should say, that they really did a good job on this. And so I feel comfortable with the outcome. I know everyone will not be pleased with the outcome, but I also want to remind folks that one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing here in the city of Schenectady is that we want people to walk away feeling that they received fair and equitable treatment. So, you know, all of the things that have gone into this particular one, I feel that, you know, the review team did a good job with the task that we asked them to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I will entertain a motion to move this forward. Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren. All in favor? Aye. All right. Then if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo?
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
No.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes, just briefly, I appreciate all the hard work that went into this discussion about the RFPs, but I too have some concerns about the process. It seems to me that it's certainly subjective at best and arbitrary. So I can in good conscience say that I can make a decision with the information that I have, and it was, the information was out there, but we still are, we're going to approve paying $40,000 more for this project. I'm not sure what the answer is for this, but it leaves room for more discussion, I think, in the process. But I think our job as council people is to listen to the recommendations that are given to us, and if we're satisfied with the recommendations, we vote aye. If we're not satisfied, we vote nay. And I'm just not satisfied with this process from what I, I mean, even if we were told, we were told it's very subjective. But to see scores all over the board, it doesn't give me a warm and fuzzy feeling. That's one of the problems that I'm having with this. So I vote no.
Mr. Mutavaren?
I do pretty much have some concern, but I think our staff did a wonderful job, and I had the opportunity to sit with them and go through the proposal that was submitted. And I think not because we have received a low bid that we have to go with a low bid. The low bid, yes, but they have to submit with all the requirements attached to it. There are a lot of bids that were submitted that did not meet the requirements, and they require documentation. And I trust our staff that they did a good job, and the recommendation was forward to us. We had an opportunity to review it, and with that said, I vote yes.
Motion is carried. Ms. King?
For the reasons already stated, I also vote aye.
Motion is carried, four to two.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have seven people signed up to speak. The first is Jason Plank.
I'm the president, city council, mayor. February is also Jewish Disability Awareness Month. Just want to let people know. Also, the end of this month is you need to file for any tax credits for property taxes and so forth, and then get your assessments ready. Again, we have an agenda where the assessment for pieces of property was reduced down from almost $800,000 down to $600,000, over a 20% reduction. And that was at the, at 1700 block of the State Street. So again, we need to have a complete, full reassessment, because if we keep reassessing these properties at 20 to 50% off, then that means everybody else needs to be done it. So just not a group of, a selected of developers and so forth need to have this access to this. Everybody needs to have access. We need to be able to level the playing field. So hopefully, we will be able to do so. And again, also, this is the time. Schenectady County just had, Metroplex did a report on their stuff, and again, they made wild accusations of claiming they had 500 new jobs. So they've gone up from 6,200 to 6,700. Still don't see where the jobs are at, and we still don't see where the minority and disability participation is. One last final comment is on these RFPs. I've sat through a lot of the hearings, and they are ripe for a civil rights lawsuit. And Carl Erickson is hitting on the nail, and so is Vince, a reggie councilman, both are hitting on the nail. These decisions are arbitrary and capricious. What you have to do is take the lowest bidder. You set the standards of when they go out, and you completely set what exactly what they're supposed to do, their qualifications, how much staff they're supposed to have, and exactly the times and frames, and so forth. And then they come back, and you take the lowest bidder. Because if you turn around and let staff sit here and say, well, I'm going to judge four points this way, five stars this way, or this point to this way, what good is it? What is good for confidentiality of an RFP? It does no good. And you need to start complying, and that's the reason why I've been asking for, and so was Councilman Joe Allen. We all asked for is an economic disparity study. We need to be able to start moving forward towards that direction to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to not only receive jobs, but also to be able to receive jobs in employment for their businesses within the city. We've got to have diversification. We've got to be able to increase jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. P.D. Vores.
My name is P.D. Vores, and I live in the city. I want to comment on the vacancy that's being, that's remaining open in the council. I think it was a very unhealthy situation that we went through before, and there, the responses to any queries made was very unsatisfactory. And I have to remember that many times Ms. Blanchard was very self-deprecating when she addressed issues because of conditions that exist in this city. And she was very self-deprecating when she talked about, "It's a secret. It's our secret, and we don't want to talk about it." And I think that's the way it was handled. I think it was obvious to a lot of people that we were not going to be represented. The conditions did not exist for representation of the public. And I'll stop there on that. I'm not pleased with what I'm hearing, but I think there is a public record of who should be replaced, and I think you're looking to put it into code. A lot of what's happening is means testing of the charter that exists right now, and I'd like to see it changed to where if there is a vacancy, the next highest vote getter automatically takes that position regardless of party. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
We need to put up walk lights, more walk lights over by the housing projects, because too many people get hurt and everything else, and we don't want that to happen. So we've got to get those walk lights up for the people to get across the street. The seniors are having a hard time of getting across the street. And I want to, garbage guys, get a little more pay, because they go through a lot, get to pick up those heavy cans and everything else and climbing heavy snow. I think they do deserve a little more pay. But I want those lights put up before anybody gets hurt, because I see wheelchairs in the road, everything, every day. So we've got to do it. It's got to be done. And you can't have people getting hurt. And it's not easy thing to do, but I'll tell you, when somebody gets hurt, the ambulance has got to come down, the fire trucks, wherever. It is tough enough, and enough is enough. So we've got to get this done before the year is out.
Okay, thank you. Lou Grasso.
Hi, my name is Lou Grasso. I live in Woodlawn. I run a business in Woodlawn. I'm kind of an activist for the Woodlawn area. And the fact that we lost Denise, who lived in Woodlawn, and they have put up a suggestion that Ed Kozier would be that replacement, I kind of urge the city council to consider that as something that Woodlawn people would like very much. Ed is very dedicated. He's a person who gets things done. He's, he can work with anybody. He's very open to every situation. If you've ever been up in the park, when you see the kids that he's got organized up there, it's unbelievable. I went a couple times last year just to see how it was run. He runs things very well, and of course, he's very active in the Woodlawn community. But when you get ready to do that, I, as a Woodlawn resident, would like very much to see Ed Kozier representing the Woodlawn section on the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Morris.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Morris. I'm the director of SLIC, Schenectady Landlords Influencing Change. In November of 2012, SLIC proposed to city council that it resurrect the long dormant Housing Standards Review Board. We felt that this board would provide property owners and landlords receiving code violations relating to permits or causing the denial of rental certificates a valuable opportunity to have a fair and balanced review of their situations. Councilwoman Perazzo, Councilwoman Perazzo, took on that focus and subsequently requested a wish list from us, which we did submit last year. We were very happy to hear, actually, it was today, that, to learn that the council has recently decided to resume the workings of this board, and we want to review this wish list that we had. Number one, we would like to have two Schenectady landlords included on that five-member board. Number two, we want to make sure that code officers uphold the constitutional rights of all persons at all times. Number three, we want to make certain that code officers follow standardized operating procedures. Number four, we want to hope that there will be a process of accountability and remediation should a landlord claim, with of course due justification, that a code enforcer did not act professionally. Number five, we want to be certain that the correct party is cited for that violation. Who is, for example, really responsible when the garbage isn't properly handled? Is it the tenant, or is it the landlord? Number six, we want to mediate, have issues mediated related to permit requirements, making certain that the requirement is valid and not unnecessary. Number seven, we'd like to see that all the citations include the specific regulation that is considered to have been violated. Number eight, that statement should also include, right on the form, the option for the violator supposedly, contact information and how to appeal the violation through the housing standard process. And we'd like to have a program instituted to assist financially distressed landlords who struggle with an excessive burden of repair costs. Now, in conclusion, we look forward to the implementation of this Housing Standards Review Board, and we want to offer the council any assistance of any kind, any collaboration, any connection with us that you wish. We would be happy to provide that. We certainly appreciate all your considerations, and we want to thank you for all of the time and that consideration. You're nice.
Thank you. Sharon Lynn Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, President King, city council members. I'm Sharon Lynn Schmidt, president for the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. I just want to make a few announcements, and the clerk has a copy, and I've ticked them off with some pink tick marks, the ones that I'm going to concentrate on. First of all, we do have this Thursday night, February 13th, 7:00 p.m., at Faith Deliverance Tabernacle Church, we have a Free Family Health Night. Dr. David Pratt, medical consultant, Schenectady County Public Health Services. Erin Buckenmeyer, community health outreach coordinator, Ellis Medicine, who also did the You Matter Schenectady survey coordination. Judy Wright Meyer, Capital District Tobacco Free Coalition. Their topics, to my knowledge, are going to be including tobacco marketing, anti-smoking, and the Guyanese-West Indies Genetic Diabetes Connection. We are putting these door hangers on doors in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood to try to bring attention to this. I did have a neighbor who personally was a lovely lady, two of the neighbors who passed away last year because of this genetic disorder. This will also include suicide prevention and mental health, and we're going to be announcing a health fair very soon. I'm going to get to some of these other announcements. As was stated, the STAR applications are due by March 2nd. That's RP467RNW on the Internet. Real Property Tax Grievance Day is May 27th, the fourth Tuesday. Have to submit your RP524 by March 2nd. So I hope all Mount Pleasant residents will take note of that, and that the RP524 for the STAR deadline is due in the office by March 2nd. Police Review Board, we are looking for Mount Pleasant residents to submit their application, and if they could send it to John Mutavaren by email, that's okay, John. His email is mutu1@yahoo.com. Applications for Neighborhood Watch, it's on the Internet at schenectadynw.com. We would like to see some Mount Pleasant neighbors join up, and I've already printed my application to fill out. Emergency Management, if you're interested in that, let me know. Upcoming events, of course, the Family Health Night, RISE Training for Retired Citizens. The March 13th meeting will be Larry King from Schenectady, he's the Schenectady Superintendent of Schools, and he's going to be talking about the new, excuse me, for one moment, his capital project. And the April 26th Sicum Day, I believe that is the day they're going to have the cleanup, re-treat Schenectady. We need volunteers. And we're going to be announcing a sports day, and we're having a crosswalk in Mount Pleasant on Good Friday, March 18th. Come to our meeting and learn all about these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Good timing. Mary McLean.
At the last council meeting, the mayor talked about negativity. Mr. Mayor, is that vacancy a positive for the community? I consider it an assault on the Constitution. The vacant seat should have been resolved in July, when the candidates were going around with petitions to access the ballot box. The Democratic mayor has allowed this to happen. The Democratic Party operatives have allowed this to happen. The Democratic council get-alongs have allowed this to happen. You all knew about it. And the departing Democratic councilwoman made it all possible. If the departure had been for 14 years of military service, the soldier would have been dishonorably discharged because she disenfranchised an entire community, a condition the senator wants to avoid in her bill that council passed a few minutes ago. She specifically says in her press release, "We cannot allow the disenfranchisement of our soldiers who fight for our right to vote," unquote. She needs to come down here and take a look at that seat and understand that her party has done this to the city. The Democratic Party has denied the citizenry access to that ballot, to that seat via the ballot box. The Democratic council has interfered with the voter's choice. Council plans to make that choice for them, and their choice is an individual who, if reports are accurate, was educated to learn a trade in the skill of plumbing. And it would mean that the majority of city officials do not hold a would mean that the majority of city officials do not hold a four-year college degree. Occupational diversity is acceptable, but there is something to be said for a resume whose applicant holds an advanced degree. I'm interested in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Okay, Ms. Perazzo.
Well, I just want to say congratulations to Mount Pleasant, because not being able to fit everything in in three minutes, because you have so much good going on in your community and so much activity, thrills me. I think that's just fabulous, when you have to talk fast to fit it all in. And I also want to say that, you know, I, I think that the general duties of being a council member aren't always pleasurable. Sometimes it's really difficult, making decisions, gathering information can be difficult and stressful, but tonight was a pleasure. It was a pleasure. Congratulations to our new fire chief and the support staff that have come up for the, through the ranks, and just on the side, you know, I was sitting here proudly, kind of looking over everyone and just thinking, what a wonderful fire department we have, and then I thought, oh, it's so hot in here, and I hope they're all okay in their uniforms, because they were standing so close together, and then I went, wait a minute, this is probably the lightest clothing they have on in the coolest, comfortable room they could be in compared to what they go through every day for the citizens in our city. And I just want to once again offer my congratulations to everyone, and just tell them how very proud I feel of the people that are in public safety in this city who care for our citizens with such great professionalism.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to read an announcement for Bellevue Preservation, Inc. They're holding their monthly meeting Thursday, February 13th at 7:00 PM at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, Parish Hall, 1911 Fairview Avenue. Speakers will be John Watrous, who will speak about recycling, and Laura Brown about Ruth's place, the new thrift shop on Broadway. The public is invited. Again, congratulations to Chief Senical and the other fire department personnel that were sworn in tonight, and I'm proud to say that Chief Senical and Deputy Chief O'Clair, they're both graduates of Bellevue Little League back when I was coaching back in those days, so they've come a long way from when they were 12 years old in their Little League uniform, so I could, I can really attest to what Chief Senical was saying about missing his son's home run, because his father had to do the same thing when, when he was playing in Little League. So, it's nice to see these kids grow up and become, you know, what they are, and it's really nice to see. So, it's, congratulations to everyone. And just quickly, to Mr. Grasso's statement, just so everybody realizes, I'm sure maybe he does too, we are all council people at large. We represent the whole city. Bellevue is lucky, in many years since Dom Gallo, we have two representatives in Bellevue. It doesn't mean that Ms. Perazzo and I are only representing Bellevue. We're representing the city as are all the other council people here, so just to make that clear, whoever gets appointed or doesn't get appointed to the seat, it shouldn't be based on where they live, it should be based on that they can serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I'd also like to add my congratulations to the fire chief, the new fire chief, assistant chief, and the captains and lieutenants, and the deputy chief. At the last council meeting, a person, a speaker came up, and they were talking about a program that was in Hamilton Hill, Weed and Seed specifically, and that perhaps after, since the program was no longer working or there, that maybe nothing was being done. So, I just thought I wanted to take this opportunity to just talk about the things that are existing and going on in Hamilton Hill, and one of the things that the Neighborhood Association is working on very diligently. The Neighborhood Association meets regularly, the original Neighborhood Association meets regularly, and has various projects going on. One of the ones right now is we are working with the merchants on Albany Street to keep the corridor clean, to actually get garbage cans there, so that, you know, we work on, on that particular, the trash issue. Union college students have come to help us with the cleanups, and, and the business owners are also very involved with that as well. We had a day that we gave awards to people who helped in the community, awards dinner last year, very well attended. We're working on bringing back the Hamilton Hill Improvement Corporation and looking at creating a bid. Most recently, the Capital District Community Loan Fund moved into 920 Albany Street, the Business Center, so there are some things going on in Hamilton Hill, and I have to say, with the Business Center coming in, that was, there were people within the Neighborhood Association who actually helped to make this come about. So, I just want to let folks know that there are positive things going on. A lot of the people who are involved in these things were involved in Weed and Seed, and just because the program is no longer there, people did not feel that they would just let things go away and, and go to the wayside and not let anything happen. So, I just want to make sure that folks are aware of that. I also want to congratulate to the women who were for the YWCA Unsung Heroine Celebration, which was held yesterday, Dolores Edmonds McIntosh and Joyce Swanson, so that was a very nice event, yearly event, and those are the two women that won. It is Black History Month, and there are, there are Black History Month celebrations going on all over, but specifically, it's Schenectady County Community College. They have a month-long celebration and various things going on. You can find them on the website. There's actually, tomorrow, there's a movie that's being held, The Butler's being held. All of these are free to the public, so people can come out, they can access this on the SEC website, and come out to all the events honoring and recognizing people from, of African-American descent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Mayor.
I would yield my time, Madam President.
Okay. And I'm going to ask Mr. Pollster to address the issue of the council vacancy. He did send all of us a letter today, so if you would, John.
Yes. As stated, I was asked to review the Charter and the Code to see if there were any provisions that were applicable to a vacancy on the council. And as it turns out, subdivision E of Charter Section 13-2, which is applicable to any of the various forms of government that the city of Schenectady could be operating under, states specifically that if a vacancy exists or occurs in the office of mayor or councilman, the council shall appoint a qualified person to fill such vacancy until the first day of January following the next general city election, at which a successor shall be elected for the full unexpired term. And given that the word "shall" is in there, it does not leave the council any discretion. It should exercise its duty and fill the seat, which whoever is selected by the council would, in this case, fill the seat until December 31st of this year '14, and the seat would be up for election in the next general election.
Okay. Thank you. And I just have two quick announcements. One is the, okay, Mr. Riggi.
Four.
The American Made Movie Event, which was hosted by the city of Schenectady, and we're really happy to announce that they raised more than $1,000 for the Schenectady-based Youth Build Scholarship for a participant pursuing a manufacturing technology, manufacturing technology program at SCCC. We want to thank all the sponsors, supporters, the attendees for their support, and I would particularly like to recognize Chad Putman, who's the deputy city clerk who really coordinated and pulled that whole event together. It was most successful. And Steve Strickman asked me to announce that there's going to be a public presentation this Thursday at 6:00 in the McChesney Room at the library for Schenectady's New York Rising Plan. New York Rising is a community reconstruction program available to communities that sustain damage by Hurricanes Irene and Lee. Schenectady and Rotterdam are each eligible for up to $3 million for initiatives that will prevent further damage during future flooding events. This meeting, the third of four public meetings, will review proposed community projects in the downtown Stockade and East Front Street neighborhoods, as well as the city's wells and water treatment plant and Rotterdam's projects. So, we hope some of you will be able to join us this Thursday at 6:00 at the McChesney Room, and there's flyers downstairs that look like this, if anybody needs more information. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.